Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, June 13th, at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado?
Here.
Atech?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan? Meitzler? Mueller?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item is approval of the minutes for the May 23rd, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Anybody having comments, questions, corrections? Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved, second?
Motion by Mueller, second by Stark to recommend the City Council approval of the minutes for the May 23rd, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is items to be removed, added or changed. We are going to remove item number 13. I don't know of anything else. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Moving on then, we'll go to item number four, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anybody here from the public that wants to address the committee for an item that is not on the agenda, now would be a good time. Okay. We'll go on then to item number five, which is the April financial report. Peggy Colby sent this out to us. Almanatech, you want to start with it?
Well, this is one of the regular reports that Peggy sends out, and I'm going to turn it over to Peggy to make comments. Good evening. I added some new reports this month, and so I just wanted to go over them with you and see if there were any questions on any area of the report that you might have. No. So our financials are made mainly of our major funds, which are General Fund, Electric, Water and Sewer. And so I've added some summary reports in the beginning here so that you can just look at those first few pages to get an idea of where we're at, since the total report is 133 pages, and I realize that's a lot to look through. So you can see this graphically, our total revenues for each major fund, and then it's followed by a comparison from the prior year, from month to month, for the General Fund, and then each fund. And then the same thing for expenditures, and then a summary of our expenditures by department for the General Fund, and then the utilities are broken out by capital, and then operations and debt. And then the same charts that we've had before, sales tax, this is regular sales tax. And our home rule sales tax, you can see where that orange line that jumps up on the chart is when we implemented the additional half-cent home rule sales tax in 2014. And then this is just a total of those two charts. And then this is, the information can be found numerically in the revenue reports, but this shows you also our liquor tax that we implemented, and you can see the difference in the collections. We didn't have any liquor tax in 2016 in January or February for collections, so they're missing there. And then our gas tax and our other utility taxes that we've had, natural gas, telecom, and water and electric. And our income tax receipts, which is another major revenue source for the General Fund. And then I also moved up the investment portfolio summary, and this is the total cash and investments on hand at the end of April. So the city had 49 million in cash and investments on hand at that time. And then this is just the chart displaying how it's invested. And then this goes into the regular reports that we've always given you, the balance sheet, and that's a picture of a point in time, and it's followed by our revenues and then our expenditures, and then at the very end, we have more investment reports with more detail by fund of where the cash is held. So it goes first by the general, so it has, in blue here, the General Fund had 11 million in cash and investments at the end of April, and then you can see how the other funds and what they have available. And then the last report we have for investments is a compliance report on the distribution by institution. And it shows, for instance, 25% out of 40%, because our investment policy, which is the next item I have on the agenda, states that no one institution would have more than 40%. So this shows you what percentage, based on the policy, is invested at each institution. And so those are the changes that I added. Did anyone have any questions on any of the information? Or is there other information you would like to see?
The visuals are nice.
Charts? More charts?
No.
Is that?
It's good.
Good.
They're good. So it looks like we're running pretty closely to the last year, but our incomes, our revenues are down a little bit, and our expenditures are up a little bit. Are these, could this just be due to billing?
It absolutely could, especially for the utilities, because the, we always have four billing dates in one month, but we don't always necessarily have four collection dates, because we give an extra time for people to pay their bill. So sometimes it crosses a month.
I guess I was thinking more of the General Fund, but that would be the...
But the General Fund too, it could be that we've had three payrolls. It depends on when the third payroll hits for the month.
Okay.
We have two months where there's three payrolls. So it might not be in the same month this year that it was last year, so when you're looking at a comparison, that could be one of the reasons.
Okay, thank you.
And then also on that expenditure report, it does show where we are to budget, what percentage of the budget we've used and what's remaining. See if I can scroll up to one that has a salary. So here, it shows that electric salaries were at 629,000 compared to 555,000 last year, and we budgeted, so we're at 31% though of budget, and last year we were at 29% of budget.
Okay, so that would...
So it would be...
More electric you...
Yeah, that would help you guide where we planned on being.
Have we had any luck negotiating our money market accounts?
Not yet. I'm still working with the bank on several issues, on the charges that they are charging us, going over the services that they provide and whether or not they are needed.
I recognize that we did just negotiate this a few years back, but in the rising interest rate environment we're in right now, banks are tripping over each other right now and buying deposits.
And in fact, that kind of segues into the next item that I have on the agenda, which is modifying our investment policy to allow the full extent of the state statutes in case we do want to open accounts at other institutions, and they may want to offer a different form of collateral than what we had in our original policy.
In general, the state funds are not paying anything close to what the banks are paying, and even when you factor in the price of collateralization, you're not losing a tremendous number of basis points on that. So I would think that if we've been threatened to go out to a proposal, we would see our savings accounts interest rates probably double overnight.
Peggy?
Mm-hmm.
You put this report out every month, and it's a very, very good, very detailed report, so it's obviously out there for anybody to see that wants to look at the agenda items. But is it on the website that anybody can see at any time also? Do you maintain it on the website? I don't know if you're doing it.
We don't have it on the transparency page. We probably, I'd have to talk to Howard about creating a folder, perhaps, to put those there. We do have all of our audits, all of our budgets, the annual treasuries, all annual reports, and all of the check registers that come to the City Council, so every check that's cut from the city, people can view.
It's...
But we could perhaps put a link so that they're in one place.
It's such a good, detailed report, it'd be nice if anybody could see it that wanted to.
Sure. I'll make a note to do that.
Lucy?
Anything else? Any other questions? All right, thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item then is Ordinance 17-41, amending Title I, Chapter 11, Section 2 of the Batavia Municipal Code to update the investment policy for the investment of public funds. Again, memo from Peggy Colby. Almanatech?
Okay, yeah, this is proposed, this proposal is to give Batavia a little more options, and it will also provide, our code is up to date with the state statute. And so they're proposing that we add language to allow for financial institution to provide collateral for deposits, so long as they are part of the Public Funds Investment Act and approved by the City of Batavia as acceptable collateral. Prior to this, we did not have this language, and the language can be found under our code in Section 4E. This change will not put public funds at risk, rather it just provides for all options as allowed under the state statute. Are there any questions about this? Comments, thoughts? Dan?
As little money as we can give to the state of Illinois or any collateralization...
This isn't moving money to the state.
No, 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 I know, but I mean to recognize any debt instrument of the state of Illinois is a...
Well, this would just be to expand our collateralization policy for our deposits, whichever institution they're at.
So how does this benefit us?
So that we can perhaps bank at another institution that might give us a higher interest rate. But they would want to, well, we are looking at actually opening another account for our motor fuel tax account. And they had asked what our collateralization policy was, and one of the forms that they normally use to collateralize, which means to pledge something to, you know, in case the bank failed, our money would be safe, and they use a different item that was not included in our policy, but is acceptable through state statute.
And on page six of 10, it includes some of the types of collateral that would be added.
Yes.
If you have any questions about that, you can look there. Are there any other questions? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Peggy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item seven is the approval of the Class C liquor license application for TVR 59 Incorporated doing business as Thai Village Restaurant at 4 North Batavia Avenue. Chief Yule sent the memo out. Almanatech?
Yes, Thai Village has applied for a Class C liquor license. The police department conducted investigation and background check and found no reason not to grant this liquor license, and they recommend that we recommend this to a council for final approval. Are there any questions? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Class C liquor license application for Thai Village Restaurant at 4 North Batavia Avenue?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? I think that can go on.
Consent, Jenna? Sure. Okay. Item eight, Ordinance 17-47, amending Title III, Chapter III, Section 3-3-10 and Section 3-3-11 of the Batavia Municipal Code to allow U.S.-resident aliens to obtain a city liquor license. Memo from Laura Newman. Almanatech?
Okay, so staff was discussing this, somehow it came up, and it appeared that the City of Batavia did not allow U.S.-resident aliens to obtain a liquor license. And so they investigated reasons why we didn't do this, and there was no clear good reason for doing this, and there were actually some benefits to the city for allowing U.S.-resident aliens to obtain a liquor license. So they are recommending that we amend our code, which is inconsistent with the state statute, and allow U.S.-resident aliens to obtain a license here. More people would be able to come to our town and open up liquor stores, and their U.S.-resident aliens already have quite a few background checks, as listed in Laura's memo, already done. So a lot of the work will be done for us, not to say that we wouldn't do our normal checking, but it would be a nice kind of assurance. Are there any questions? Comments? All right. Would someone like to make a motion that we recommend at council the approval of Ordinance 17-47, amending Title III, Chapter III, Section 3-3-10 and Section 3-3-11 of the City of Batavia Liquor Control Code to allow U.S.-resident aliens to obtain a city liquor license?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent, Jenna?
Maybe we should mention it in case someone's out there wanting a liquor license.
Okay.
That's a U.S.-resident alien.
All right, next item is item number nine, which is the approval of the liquor license for Rosati's Pizza. Almanatech?
Okay, I looked for a memo on this, and I don't have one. I'm assuming they're applying for a Class D liquor license and that all, maybe, did I miss the memo? Mayor, is this an item that you had put on the agenda? The Rosati's and the...
Yes.
Yes. And so have all background checks been done?
I think...
Backgrounds on both of these items are not leaked yet.
Okay.
Is this a Class D liquor license?
Yeah.
I move we table them until, or do you want to make it subject to?
I just wanted the folks to come in and let them tell you what they're thinking about doing.
Oh, okay.
Their existing businesses in town right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And he's just at, but he wants to change over and become a restaurant serving at the table with, have a liquor. So he's got a big plan, and I just wanted to share it with you so that...
Excellent.
Sophie, would go ahead.
I hope I don't scare you.
No.
If you don't mind, could you give us your name for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Ali Kunchwala, and I'm here on behalf of Rosati's Pizza in Batavia on 334 East Wilson Street. My father opened Rosati's in 1987. My affiliation with Rosati's happened when I was nine years old, and instead of playing outside like every other kid, I was with the old man, kneading the dough, mixing the sauce, trying to answer the phones, and when he wasn't looking, I would try to eat everything as possible, so. As I grew, Rosati's grew as well. After graduating high school and graduating college at Western Illinois University with my major as hotel and restaurant management, I wanted to come back to this community where I learned everything, my first passion, and expand on my father's business. Rosati's is going to be hitting 30 years this year. In Batavia, which is a very community-oriented town, that's a big deal. And with the point, what's happening now is volumes raising, and we can't keep up. I'm sure most of you, I see so many familiar faces have stopped in on a Friday night, and you just hear the phones going off, and it's crazy. So what we plan on doing is, we want to expand our business to absorb the corner units of our plaza, and for those of you who are not familiar, that'd be the Old Panda, the Panda Chinese Restaurant, and expand it so we could have a seating area. So a central component to our expansion is obtaining a license to sell alcohol from the City of Batavia in order to diversify the services that we provide to our community. We believe that adding the sale of alcohol to our business will allow us to continue to be an integral part of Batavia's financial and social fabric, as Peggy mentioned earlier. We do not see ourselves as just a business, but as a communal space where customers have became family, and we plan on doing that tradition for years to come. We have submitted our liquor application, and we are, basically what our plan is, is to take over, move our store from 334 to 320 and 322, and apply for a liquor license to serve beer and wine. So not only will it expand our store, but it gives, you know, our customers another chance to enjoy us, because right now they could only enjoy seeing my face for 10 minutes when I ring them up, or my delivery driver. And over the years, it's been saying, you know, you guys should expand, you guys should expand. So finally, you know, hitting 30 years, our family decided that, you know what, I think this is a benchmark that we should definitely take into consideration, and that's why I'm here before you. So, thank you. Thank you for listening to me, and we can proceed further.
Thank you. It sounds wonderful.
Awesome. Is there any questions? I mean, I do have, you know, to the general of my knowledge, I can answer the best.
I just have a couple of questions for you. When is your official 30-year anniversary?
It will be, it'll be the second week of October in this coming...
This coming year?
Yeah.
You think you'd have your expansion done for your 30th anniversary?
It depends on how hard you folks want to work with me. So, yeah, no, we definitely, we are in touch with our landlord, Midland, and they're more than willing to work with us. And we've just, from, not many people know, but just from like our close, close customers, it's only been positive feedback. And me being, you know, my, working with my old man and doing this, going to school for this degree, I feel like not only can we hold this, do it in a responsible manner, but at the same time bring something to Batavia, you know, just like the past council member says, bring them to our town so they can spend money here, which in turn will help us out and raise that 49 million dollars, so.
Well, I think it sounds like a great idea. I look forward to seeing you doing it. I can't see any detriment to it and only benefits from it. Of course, you're going to have to pass all the background checks and everything like everybody else does, and imagine the mayor will want to sit down with you and tell you how hard he is on liquor license holders if they don't abide by the law.
Yeah.
But other than that, I can't see where there's going to be an issue with the passage of the license. Anybody else have any comments on that? Okay.
Is this only for a sit-down, like I'm going in, I order a pizza, I'm getting a beer, or...
So it's like...
Waiting for my pizza, can I get a beer while I'm waiting for my pizza?
Like when my fiancee sends me to go get a pizza, when, because she doesn't live around here, I go an hour early, sit at the bar, and, you know, tell them, take, take your time. So it's going to be like, it's not going to be like so much of a bar, it's going to be more like, if you were to compare it to another eatery, like a Portillo's or a Chipotle, rather, where you order and you sit down, and it's, so it's like more of a fast casual base, rather than a full, full-service bar with waitresses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's no action on that then tonight, right? Almanatech?
Right.
Okay.
And is there someone here from Hot Pan?
Yes.
Would you like, welcome?
Same thing.
Okay, good.
Thank you. My name's Brian Neison. My wife, Daisy, is the owner and founder of Hot Pan. We're at 227 West Wilson Avenue. To explain what Hot Pan is, and I know, I think some of you already have Dan Dan Sauce on your shirts, you might understand, but you have to know Daisy. As a child in Chongqing, China, Daisy was recruited by the federal government to become a precision skydiver. She was tested in her grammar school, and they found out that she had absolutely no fear. She was the most intense person that they'd ever met. In a short while, she led the Chongqing Province's skydive team as their lead jumper. She ended up taking second place in the Chinese Nationals. And shortly thereafter, during a competitive jump, her chute failed to deploy. The protocol would be to use your backup chute and abandon the jump, but Daisy refused, and she untangled her chute, stayed on target, completed the jump, and won the competition. But they fired her. They said, "You're too crazy to jump out of airplanes." So instead, they made her a pilot, and she became a stunt pilot for air shows. At the age of 17, she's flying biplanes upside down through flaming hoops. Then later on, a competitive parasailor. So the Chinese government rewarded her when she was 25 years old and decided to retire from extreme sports. They gave her a restaurant in Beijing, about 1,200 miles from her home in Chongqing. In the biggest city in the world, she realized that nobody there knew how to cook. So she started cooking her own food for herself and sharing it with her customers. The theme of her restaurant was a karaoke steakhouse, and the whole idea was that they were supposed to cater to Japanese businessmen, who in the early 90s were the only people in China with any money. When she went to the government and said, "Well, I'd like to serve my food," well, they said, "You're crazy." "Well, you already told me that," she says, "but they like my food. But you can't serve that food to Japanese people, that's not what they like. I will do it my way." And she did. Well, fast forward to 2005, she moves to the United States and meets me, and I discovered her incredible talent, her amazing drive, and her intense stubbornness. We started our restaurant in Joliet in 2011, and right away, her Chinese vendors and accountant and all of her advisors suggested, "You need to cook egg rolls, sweet and sour pork, governor-soaked chicken." Well, first of all, she says, "What is that? I've never eaten any of that stuff. I will do it my way." And so she started making dumplings from scratch, making her noodles by hand, creating all of her sauces in her kitchen, and cooking only food that her grandmother taught her how to cook in the 1960s. She does it her way. She unfortunately does not like to give up a lot of control to other people, so she does all the cooking. She supervises every step of preparation. We soon found out in Joliet that when you have 50 people walk into the restaurant in an hour, you have to give things up a little bit. So what she did was she gave me the ability to sell them some beer. So I started, started offering craft beers to our customers. We currently have an offering of about 110 different craft beers in bottles that we offer to our customers in our little 1,200-square-foot space in Joliet. It's very difficult to manage all of that inventory, and I would personally explain to people the type of beer that they were getting and try to suggest something new for everybody. And that kind of made it bearable to wait 45 minutes for a carryout order when you walked in off the street. So that is why we're before you here today. We need liquor. We need to sell beer, because people get impatient when they smell her food and can't eat it. So please consider offering our liquor license. We've already submitted our background checks and our application fee. And if there's any questions that you have for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Oh, okay, so I'll make a comment with you too. Like the gentleman in front of you, I wish you all the luck, and I can't imagine that there's going to be a problem with getting your liquor license passed once it does come to us, as long as you pass all the background checks. Unfortunately, this isn't going to be a celebration of your 30th anniversary, and I'm not sure I'll be here in 30 years that I can help you celebrate, but I hope you still are here in 30 years and have expanded like the Rosati's are talking about doing, and wish you all the luck.
Current space we've got is plenty big.
I'm sorry?
The space that we have at, over on Wilson Street, is plenty big. We don't need to expand anymore.
And speaking of that, you are in operation now, right?
We opened this Saturday.
So as long as you're on TV here tonight, do you want to tell everybody where, give us your address and what hours you're open and days?
Yes, of course. So we're at 227 West Wilson, right across the street from the library. We are open Monday through Thursday night, or excuse me, 11:00 AM until 9:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, we extend the hours till 10:00 PM, and Sunday it will be 11:00 till 8:00. Please don't all come at once.
All right.
He's already busy.
Mayor? Yeah, I just want to share, obviously, these two gentlemen had come in and met with me last weekend, I believe I had Deputy Chief Mazza, I think, was down there with me. And I was very impressed by talking to both of them as to what they, plans they had and their great interest and faith in what they saw in Batavia. So I thought, number one, you guys like to know what's going on, who these people were, et cetera. So I thought I was good, invite them both here tonight so you could hear firsthand what they have in mind, because I think they do, are providing kind of an exciting new idea here of, you know, this growing restaurant industry that we seem to be taking on in downtown Batavia. And so I've had other people in other towns tell me that Batavia's becoming a place to come to eat, and I think this is kind of speaking to the growing momentum that we have here. So I didn't want to get their licenses bogged down for a continued time that you, who is this? I don't know anything about it. So I thought we'd go a little bit, kind of go outside the normal course of, of operation here and let you hear firsthand, because from what the police could tell me, it looked like both of them are going to pass their tests of background, so I just thought we'd get, kind of speed this along a little bit and let everybody understand what it is that we're trying to do here. But these are going to be... But these are gonna be two new, exciting restaurants, I think, in downtown Batavia.
Your Honor, maybe a question for the chief. Will we have, do you think you'll have the background checks done by the next council meeting?
The one on 19th?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Because I was gonna say, we could recommend the council from here tonight, and then if they have the background checks done, we could...
We'll do everything we can.
We could approve it.
Yeah, whatever we can. He's planning to open without a license, so he knows he can't serve for...
But we did open.
Well, you did, okay, but he's, he knows he can't be serving up there till he gets his license, but I'm, I'm somewhat confident that he's gonna get it, so I just wanted...
And that was my thought, is we could recommend to council tonight. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to recommend both of them to council.
Subject to...
As soon as the background checks are done and they pass them, then we could put it on the agenda for the next council meeting.
All right. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We need to make two motions or just one? Well, you really can't make a motion without a resolution or ordinance being in front of you, so I think, given, given direction to staff is what we need to do. If they can get their background checks done and...
But I don't know if liquor licenses have a resolution number or a motion, or...
Yeah, technically, the, the mayor has the authority to hand out the liquor licenses, unless we limit the number of licenses, in which case we have to approve, you know, another one to be issued.
We've always gone...
We don't do that.
We've always gone through the formality that the council approves the license.
But I don't think they've ever had a resolution or...
Which in a sense is kind of the, the liquor commissioner deferring to the council.
Well, I think it's important that the council understand who these people are and who we're bringing into this town. And so, and these have all been good ones. I mean, so this is a, you know, I think a positive thing, but, you know, right now, you know, if you're gonna add to the licenses, you guys are gonna have to amend the ord, if we had some more that we didn't have, you know, we gotta amend the ordinance and add some if we don't have...
Yeah, we haven't limited the numbers, so they're just available.
So I think, Kevin, then, just giving indication to the police department and the mayor that we're in favor of entertaining this at the next council meeting, if everything can be done in time is fine. Okay, let's go on then to the next item, which is item 11, Resolution 17-77-R, Appointment of the Foya Officers, memo from Lauren Newman, City Administrator, Almanetec.
Okay, the Illinois Freedom of Information Act states that each public body shall designate one or more officials or employees to act as its Freedom of Information Officer or Officers. And Laura Smith Newman, we received a memo from her, and she recommends the appointment of herself, Chris Cudworth, Cheryl Shrimp, Shimp, and Christie Schuman and Jeff Albertson as Freedom of Information Act Officers for the City of Batavia. Would someone like to make a motion that we approve this in Resolution 17-77-R, Appointment of the Foya Officers, and recommend this approval to council?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Are there any questions or any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I think that can go on consent, consent agenda.
Okay. All right, then, we'll go on to Resolution 17-79-R, Approving an Amendment to the Lease Agreement for 2 East Wilson Street, the Tomley Building. Memo from Lauren Newman, City Administrator, Almanetec.
Yes, Bree Hayes, the proprietor of Fawn Gifts, has asked that we, she's doing very well there, and has asked that we extend her lease to January 30th, 2018, in order for her to stay there and benefit from another good holiday season. The lease will remain the same except for the extension of, except, except for the expiration date, and then she's gonna pay an extra $50 a month. Is that correct?
Actually, $30.
Oh, $30 a month.
It's a 5% increase.
5% increase, okay. Chris, do you have any comments?
No, Bree is here, and if you have any questions of her, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer. So really, those are the only changes from the conditions of the original lease. It's still, once it expires, it then goes on month to month, with each party having the ability to terminate the lease with 30-day notice. So what we're doing essentially is, if the property remains, by the way, for sale, if someone were to come to the city and say, "I want to buy the property," we would just have to put them off to a closing date past the first of the year. These things take months anyways, so I don't imagine that'll be a critical problem. So I don't see any negative impact and only see a positive impact in recommending the lease extension. But with that, I, I just, just Bree Hayes, you met her when she first had her lease about a year ago.
Time flies. It seems like you were just here.
It, it really does. So if you guys have any questions, the main thing is that I'd love to have another holiday season in there. The holiday season was incredible. The January through March was really hard, as all, all retail really is for that stretch. And so I'd love to have a little bit more time, get through another holiday season, and then plan my move to wherever I get to move, or wherever I plan to move afterwards during that January to March time, so that I'm not losing the, like, not losing like the money, not losing the, the store being out in the city in a time that people actually shop. So that's why I want to do that, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Yes?
Do you have your eyes on, on any particular property, or do you have any idea where you'd like to land?
Um, that's a tricky question. I am still thinking really hard about that. I'd like to, I'd love to stay downtown in a lot of ways. I don't know if that's possible. I, just because I don't know what will be available, and there, there is a little bit that feels scary about being part of the downtown during the next, like, four years, and like, the growing pains, like, as a retailer, and there not being a lot of retail, that's scary. It has been really fun to be one of the kind of foraging people, so I've, I have a couple ideas of possible things that I'm still waiting to, you know, make some phone calls, have some conversations. I looked at a property in West Town that looked really cool as a possibility. But really, I mean, I've been, you know, going, 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 just trying to get the shop to be the point where that I know I want to move it, so I'm not, I have no clear-cut idea yet. I'm hoping to figure that out, and this would also give me some time to do that. If the lease is up in July, it's probably gonna be like, a hard, hard move.
Any other questions or comments? Laura?
I just wanted to comment and really give a compliment to Bree with how creative that she has been with her business, and also very adaptive to the needs of customers who come in and, and making changes and creating programs that address those needs. And, you know, a perfect example is her noticing that people were poking their nose in the window on their way to the farmer's market. And sure enough, if she didn't change her hours so that she now opens at 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays, so that people can come in and shop, so I just wanted to applaud the creativity that you've brought to your business.
Thank you. Thanks.
While we're on that, why don't you tell us what your hours are and what, what kind of gifts and such you do offer?
Sure. So we focus on handmade gifts and by independent makers. We have a lot of makers from Batavia, a lot of makers from about 70% Illinois, mixed in with a little bit of vintage, there's something for everybody. And hours are Wednesday through Friday, 12 to 7:00, Saturdays from 8:00 to 3:00, and Sundays, 12 to 3:00. I'll also open up by appointment if someone messages me on Facebook or emails me, but those seem to be the best times to get, that people are downtown moving, moving along. So we also have classes upstairs, and we're open anytime that there's a class going on.
And would you also like to plug your podcast?
Yes, yes. I have a podcast. It's called Rivertown Life, and it is on the Fox Valley, Fox Valley Network, is that what it's called? Fox Valley Voice by, it's run by High Baker Tiaras, you can look that up on our website or Instagram. And there's actually, there's, there's an episode that we talk about our mayor over here. I don't know if you know that, but you should give it a listen. Anything else?
Thank you, Bree.
Thanks, guys.
Would, are there any questions or comments? Would someone like to make a motion to recommend to council the approval of the proposed amendment to existing lease at 2 East Wilson Street for Fawn Gifts, Bree Hayes proprietor?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I, I think this should go on the regular agenda.
I agree. Okay, per the amendment, we're gonna skip item number 13, and we're gonna go right on to item number 14, which is the presentation on the wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 rehabilitation, monthly progress report. Alman O'Brien, you gonna start us out with that?
This is monthly progress report. It's pretty straightforward what, what's been going on, what the, the payments have been since we're just starting out. There has been some, quite a considerable amount of work being done so far in the early stages. I don't know if you want to talk about the relocation of a 36-inch stone sewer, Gary, if you want to do that, but it's pretty, it's all spelled out here pretty simply, so...
Thank you, yes. Trotter gave us a good, good summary memo. Tonight's should be pretty short. Two weeks ago, we were before you and talked about how we were gonna transition to a mid-month monthly update. So it's only been two weeks since our last update, and then our next update will be in mid-July. Really underground construction ongoing over the last two weeks, with the most exciting thing probably happening today, and that we began demolition of the admin building. So the buildings are actually coming down out there. I don't have the flyover tonight, actually I do, but it shows basically the same thing as last time, and, but next month, we should be able to show some good progress on the flyover. So I will just turn it over if anyone has any questions.
I just want to say, I really like this report. You know, it's a pretty quick, easy read, and it just keeps us just watching the development of it. I just think it's, well, being in, in construction, for me, it's exciting, you know?
Certainly, there'll be a lot more to report in upcoming, upcoming months. It's just getting started right now.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. That's it for me. Anybody else? Thank you, Gary.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Item 15, Resolution 17-78-R, Authorizing Execution of a Contract for the 2017 Street Resurfacing Program with Geneva Construction Company in the Amount of $1,433,338. Memo out of engineering from Rahad Farin. Alman Wolf?
Thank you. This is our annual street resurfacing program. This year, we're gonna do a total of, over seven miles of city streets will be improved. And there's a list in there that gives all the locations on which streets they are all over the city. And turn that over to Rahad now.
Yeah, thank you. So we advertised the bid and opened the bids on June 6th. It's a state-funded program, so state has to approve the bid and everything, that's why it kind of takes a little bit of time. Also, this bid has $100,000 CDBG fund that we were awarded through the Kane County early in January, so they have to review the bids and, you know, all the, all the things, make sure that we are advertising it to the DBE construction firms out there, reach out to all the Kane County disadvantaged contractors out there. So took a little bit of time to go through all that, but we did get very good bids. I did have conversation with the contractors, they said the gas price or the oil price being down, it's, it's pretty aggressive out there. And also seems like the tollway work that was going on in last few years has been almost going away, so the contractors are pretty hungry, so the price came out pretty good for us. So we are planning to start right after July 4th. Obviously, the cloud of state shutting down is there. We were at IDOT for a couple of pre-construction meetings last week, and they were saying that by end of this week, state may issue the letter. If you remember, last year, we had the same issue when Geneva started working and state issued a stop order. That's why we are thinking of starting right after July 4th. By that time, we'll know whether we have a budget or not, and then move forward at that time. I, I mean, last year, we had that same issue. We started saw cutting, you know, sidewalk and curb, and then state issued a stop work order, and it's kind of messy, you know, you tell residents that we are gonna start, and then you say, "We are stopped," you know, and then like four weeks gone. So, so we are gonna try to avoid all that hassle going forward and, and go from there.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, comments?
I guess the only question, being new to this side of it, when we get these bids, we talked about this a few weeks ago, that things are coming in cheaper than we expect, is there any opportunity to say, "Oh, let's pull a couple more streets in to, we budgeted this amount, obviously that's your estimate," is, is there, is there any opportunity to say, "Hey, let's take advantage of this?"
No, when it is state-regulated, we cannot do that, but if it was our own budget, own city general fund, we could do that. Unfortunately, no. Thank you.
Thanks.
If, if the state doesn't give us the okay to get started, how long does this contract stand good for?
Okay, so state will sign the contract. Once city council approves the contract, it goes to state for their signature. So they will sign it, and we can start right away. I think our contract says, the contract has to start on June 26th. We don't say that he has to, but that's the earliest start date, so he can choose to start a little bit later. But I had that conversation with Geneva Construction, saying, "Maybe wait till July 4th," you know, and, and, and start, because by that time, we'll probably know from state whether they are gonna pass a budget or do something to say, "Yeah, work and keep going," you know?
But I guess my question is, Rahad, if the state doesn't do something so that they can give us the okay to go ahead, how long is this price good for? You know, if, if it drags out another month or two?
That, that's a question I don't, I don't know answer of, because state has millions of dollars of project that they are gonna put on hold. I think, from last year's experience, I think they said 30 days, that's what they, the memo came out to, saying it's, it's on hold for 30 days. I'm not sure whether after 30 days, there, there is some action or, or some damage that the contractors can get. I, I don't know. But they, they do allow remobilization. So if the state, if a project is ongoing and state says stop work order, then the contractor is, is allowed to ask for a remobilization for that project again. But in, in this case, we are not gonna mobilize, so we are not gonna talk about any remobilization. But it, it can, it can go on hold for a while. I don't think Geneva will be asking for any extra money if it goes beyond 30 days. I think we have a good reputation with Geneva about that, that they like working in the city. And then he seems like he's, he's, he's hungry for work, too, so he, he would like to go.
I guess my fear would be, you never know what, what's gonna happen with the state, and if, if things don't get worked out, and we get to the point that we're at, say, September, before we get the green light, and then you, as the engineer, you might say, "Hey, we don't want you to get started this late in the year." Maybe it's later than that, I don't know. You know, would they hold the numbers for next year? How does that work contractually? And I guess my point would be, it would be sure a shame, because these are very competitive numbers, and we're getting, like Rahad said, we're getting very competitive numbers for two reasons, the oil and the lack of work. So if we can't take advantage of these low numbers that we're getting because the state can't get their act together, it'd just be one more.
Now, I'm gonna look at Peggy. One of the options that we always have is, we can tell the contractor to move ahead and, and do the work, even the state is in a shutdown mode, because it's a reimbursement from the state. So the city council could authorize us to go ahead and do the work, and once the work is completed, we can just seek the reimbursement, when state has a budget. So that's an option that we have. Sorry, Peggy.
That makes me a little nervous. Any other comments? Are you wanna make? Okay.
It's not turning on. Oh, okay. I was just...
I was gonna say, you always run the risk that they could turn you down, because you don't really have the authority to move forward, so there is that risk, but it would be a very minimal risk.
Okay. Everybody understand? Anybody care to make a motion to recommend a council Resolution 17-78-R, Authorizing Execution of a Contract for the 2017 Street Resurfacing Program with Geneva Construction Company in the Amount of $1,365,084 plus 5% contingency?
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Talk about it.
Oh, yeah. Let everybody know how many, how many miles we're doing.
Yep, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is item 16, which is ordinance 17-42, grant of a variance for parking at OMG Automotive Warehouse at 8, 1183 Pearson Drive, Unit 113. Gino E. Doblen, I'm not sure if I got that right or not, is the applicant. Memo came from Joel Strossman, Alderman Stark.
Thank you. The zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June 7th to consider a variance request for the zoning code table 4.204 off-street parking requirements. The variance would allow OMG Automotive Warehouse, an internet-based automotive sales business, to operate out of property that provides fewer parking places than required for an automobile dealership. The subject property is zone G-I, General Industrial. So, this has come before us in the not-too-distant path, we talked about this, and this particular type of zoning. This is unusual business use in that it's not like a used car lot where there's going to be a lot of cars sitting outside waiting for people to stroll in and look at. It's done primarily by appointment, it's internet-based, and so, Mr. Doblen noted he doesn't perform any automobile service on the site. He can store 10 to 12 built- their cars within the building, and so, he was hoping for a variance from our code. The alternatives are for this ordinance 17-42. The pros are, the approval of the ordinance will allow OMG to sell automobiles in the building at 1183 Pearson Drive. The cons, denial of the ordinance would not allow automobile sales, and lease space would not generate sales tax associated with automobile sales. Their budget impact, our budget impact would be, we wouldn't get the sales tax revenue from the sale of automobiles, and there would be no additional staffing impact. So, this came out of the zoning board of appeals with a positive recommendation, it was unanimous six to nothing, and so, staff recommendably passes this. Is there a petitioner here, Joel?
Yes.
If he'd like to come up and speak, Mr. Doblen, if you'd like to come up and talk to council about your business model, that would be great, so he could understand a little bit more if I didn't cover it correctly.
No problem. My name's Gino Doblen, I live at 1417 Fieldside Lane, North Aurora. I chose 1183 Pearson, because I have a couple of friends that do business in the Batavia area, it's close to home, I wanted to start my own business, keep overhead down. It's, internet sales is different than going to a new car store, a used car store. Everybody remembers back in the day, mom wanted a new washer dryer refrigerator, you load the whole kids up, you went Sears, Kohl's, JCPenney's, Kmart, anywhere there was electronics, it was an all-day event. As most of you people know now, the internet is God to most people, because no one has that time to spend all day there. And the only time people would want to come in is to drive the car, put their hands on the car, and really just finalize and do paperwork. I try to make it as easy as possible. There's a couple small local businesses here, the mobile station, I know one of the gentlemen, he actually is the mechanic over there, so any work that I need to have done, I outsource to Batavia, details as well. I mainly use it to just warehouse cars, answer phones, but other than that, it's an appointment-based only.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Doblen?
What kind of cause do you sell?
We are, because we're over the internet, we are paying sales tax on these cars?
Yes, yes, there would, if, if everything goes on you guys, I guess, to motion it and move forward, yes. Sales tax would be collected and everything for the state and for you guys. To answer your question, sir, I sell pretty much anything and everything, cars that if a family member needs one for a son or daughter, and the instance or the occasion if someone passes away, you have the third car sitting in a two-car. I buy the vehicles from you as well. The only things I do not like to generate or do business with are boats, RVs, and motorcycles, just because everybody and their mom thinks they know everything and anything about them, so.
I have a question.
Yes?
I'm in complete support of this, but obviously, this is unknown territory. What's the process, if for some reason, there is a lot of traffic over the next, you know, six months, year, the business model changes or whatever, how do we go back and say, "This isn't working out," is, what's, what's the process?
Joel, would you like to address that?
Excuse me. If we do receive information that there, that parking is tight there, we would investigate and find out the reason for it. If the reason was Mr. Doblen's business, for example, I would contact him and ask him if he's had any change in the way he's doing business. If there is a change and it doesn't fit what the ordinance is that the City Council approved, the variance, then that would effectively make the variance invalid, and the city could revoke. Otherwise, it, it's a problem where a successful business comes into any location, and if it generates more traffic, there may be issues. We don't really want to discourage success in businesses, but we feel we have some safeguards put into this ordinance about Mr. Doblen not displaying vehicles outside, or even parking his inventory vehicles outside. In addition to the protection in the variance ordinance, that's also specified in his lease, that he cannot do that.
Perfect, thank you, I'm in, I'm in support.
Anyone else? No other questions for Mr. Doblen? Sounds, it's a concept we're all getting so familiar with, so, is it kind of a one-for-one swap, so you sell a car, then you get another car in its space?
Well, what I like to do is, is some people, they really like classic cars, some people want something more cost-effective for a child, I mean, let's face it, I got a 17-year-old goddaughter, hence the OMG, and, you know, she is starting to drive, she's gonna go to nursing college and everything like that, so of course, the first car that I put her in was a '79 Ford Stationway with wood trim, because it's safe, it's cheap metal, everybody knows it, but it is kind of what it is. So, if you came in with a vehicle, it is kind of like a one-for-one, but mainly, it is, I do more of a locating of an internet service of a specific car that you may have your eyes on.
Okay.
And that's what I like to do and move forward.
Okay, terrific. Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Thank you, guys.
Well, we're not done yet, we have to vote. I'm kidding.
I'll make a motion, we recommend to City Council for passage of ordinance 17-42, grant of approval for variance for parking OMG Automotive Warehouse, 1183 Pearson Drive, Unit 113, Gino E. Doblen applicant.
Second?
Motion by O'Brien, second by Zaron. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So, this will go to the next city council, and, you wanna talk about it, Susan?
Um, yeah, we could, I think it's a good idea, some new business, I think that'd be great.
Publicity, yeah. Okay. So, it'll go to the next city council for approval, and it'll go on TV, so if you wanna get up and talk about your hours of business or what you do, I think the mayor would welcome that. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is item 17, which is approval and allowance for a 6 a.m. start for Siemens site remediation activities. Alderman Stark.
Well, as long as it's not on the fourth ward, they can start at 4 a.m. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So, Scott, would you like to talk about this?
Sure, yeah. This is Siemens' site on Van Nordwick and McKee, and they are ready to start the remediation work on the soil removal and excavation, and then refilling it with clean material. As part of that, they have asked for an early start to that, because, two reasons, one is they want to try and get the work done as soon as possible, and then, secondly, they also are trying to avoid some of the cross-times with the daycare that's on the other side of Wilson Street. So, their exit and entrance for this is going to be on Wilson Street driveway. So, they have asked for a 6 a.m. start, that is something that is a little bit unusual, but it is certainly something that they've asked to do, and the discretion of that is up to the council as to whether or not they wish to allow for that additional hours to do that. So, their written request is in the packet, and that is their request.
Scott, do you know if this is particularly loud, you know, is there a lot of trucks moving, is there jackhammering, is it, what will be going on that 6 a.m. might bother the surrounding neighbors?
Yeah, a lot of what they've said that they would be doing is loading of already pre-excavated material, they would not do any backup of vehicles so that there would be any beeping, they would presumably do some startup and warm-up of equipment at that point in time, so, you know, there, there might be some level of noise associated with it, so, I won't say it will be completely quiet.
Lucy, you got a question?
Can you clarify the ordinance that applies here? Because I think we had a conversation via email about some things going on in my ward, and I wasn't under the impression from our email that there was an ordinance that specifically said 7 a.m.
The, it's, it's a construction ordinance that talks about, you know, they did different hours. This, this falls under the construction ordinance requirements, because they're doing actual construction and, you know, grading of the site.
So, it doesn't apply to people doing work?
Like mowing and that type of thing? Yeah, that's different.
Yeah, if they've hired someone to do the mowing, it does not apply.
Correct, that's different.
Okay. Would any of the aldermen in that ward like to say anything?
I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. It's your ward and it marks, right? Yeah.
And bordering.
Right.
You said they're gonna be using Wilson Street as their, where they're going in and out?
That's correct, yes.
If we say yes now, and then a week into this, it's a mess, we can obviously pull back.
That's correct.
And what'll the requirements be for them to clean Wilson Street if they're dragging mud and, you know?
Yeah, I mean, they would, they would be required to clean up any, any tracking material that's being tracked on a daily basis, they do have a construction entrance that's being proposed as part of this, you know, to try and minimize that and clean the tires and that type of thing, so. But, you know, if they did track anything onto the street, you know, they would be required to clean it up, and they, they've indicated that they would do so, so.
Well, it'd shorten the amount of time that they'll be on-site working? Will they be working longer days if they're starting at 6 a.m.?
In theory, yes.
Yeah, because I think they want to get out of there, too, before school starts.
That's absolutely part of it, right.
Right, that's the major motivation.
It's the biggest thing, because that would be a nightmare if they're dealing with school traffic.
Right.
So?
My only comment, I guess, would be concern, I mean, I've been in the construction industry, I sympathize for these guys and understand what they're trying to do, but in your, in your memo, when you mentioned that even tonight, Scott, that they won't be doing any backing up, but they'll be loading up trucks and stuff, I don't know how you can load trucks without backing up, you've got backup alarms on everything now, it's an OSHA requirement. So, I guess, you know, if it does go to the city council and gets approval, I think you would just have to be very clear with them that, you know, no backup alarms, no excessive banging of buckets when they're loading, and if we get serious complaints and numerous complaints, we're gonna have to stop it.
What we were suggesting is that this may not go to council, because it's not requiring an ordinance change, per se, so if you're okay with it, we would advise them they're okay, and if there are problems, then we would bring it back to you to revoke that permission, essentially. That was our, our process of consideration, I guess.
I, you know, I, I guess I go along with that to a point, I, to say that you'll bring it back to us, it might be a whole week of misery for all the residents listening to these backup alarms and such, and I think we should just let you have the authority, if it passes even tonight, we should just let the community development department have the authority to say enough is enough, and you can't do this anymore.
Sure.
I'm between three and four blocks away, so I think I, if I, if I can hear it-
You'll hear it.
We'll know about it.
Why couldn't they just pull council? Just pull, pull us, if we get a complaint, and we could revoke them that way.
If, if we get a complaint, I mean, we can certainly just write, you know, say, you know, at this point, you know, if we get, if we get a bona fide complaint about it, we could just tell them they have to stop until we can consult with the council again.
I think it's better to have the council delegate specifically the authority to community We could have some issues if there was an informal poll and not a public, something other than a public meeting, not to mention an Open Meetings Act violation, so I think it's better to delegate the authority.
Yeah, and I guess beyond that, other than Alan monitoring it from three or four blocks away, are you guys gonna do anything, is anybody gonna do anything to be proactive about it, or are we just gonna wait?
Well, if we get a complaint, we're obviously gonna, you know, look into it and make sure that, you know, it's a bona fide complaint, and that if, if, you know, it's noisy and everything, then I think we would probably just tell them, "You have to go back to the normal hours, unless we come back to you in a formalized setting and say, you know, here's what the complaint was, do you want to allow them to continue?" So, I mean, they're gonna have to adjust their work hours in order to deal with that.
Yeah, it's catch-22. I want it cleaned up, but I don't want it-
I don't remember doing this for another contractor, have we done that?
Um, I don't, I don't think we've done it before anybody, we had some requests from the past, but I don't think we've actually done it for anybody.
Okay.
I mean, one of our, one of our concerns we do have is, is, that I have actually, is allowing it on the weekends. You know, a lot of times, people are up at this hour anyway, so, you know, that's fine, but, you know, on the weekends, not necessarily.
Uh-huh.
Scott, is it going to be a, a union job?
I do not know.
No idea.
They have no advices.
The reason I bring that up is because unions have, have contracts, and we don't want to be on the losing end of that contract, where, you know, work is supposed to start by contract at 7 a.m., and if you do start at 6, the unions can come back to the stakeholders and, and demand, I believe, you know, that, that people who've been working, because to be paid that time and a half, okay, that premium time, and it has happened in the past, so it's just something to be wary of, you know?
Sure.
And as far as construction, I mean, I'm, this is every day for me, it's gonna be, it is noisy, it's just what it is. It's trucks.
Yeah.
I mean, diesel trucks, and so, see how it goes, I, but be ready to pull the plug right away.
Yeah, that's my feeling on it, Mike, I, I think, let's try it, but I don't think it's gonna last very long.
No, I don't either.
What are they gonna get, an extra hour times however many days they're gonna get, what, an extra day of work out of this? They must be cutting it really fast.
Yeah, they, they don't do it for, there's no overtime, I mean, overtime costs money. Instead of doing it to work more hours, they're doing it for the workers themselves who beat traffic. You get to work earlier, traffic is light, that's really the only reason that it's done.
It could be beating traffic, beating the heat, you know, days like what we've had this week, our guys are, you know, they're wanting to show up at 6 and go home at 2, and in some jobs, we can, some jobs, we can't.
Well, one of my questions would be, too, is if they're working with somebody where they're taking this stuff, and they're only open certain hours, or the timeframes that they have to transport this stuff.
Yeah, I guess, you know, how they run their business is how they run their business, we got the question in front of us of whether or not we want to extend the work out.
Hello. Hello. I'm not gonna have to take the phone calls on this likely, but I'm not really excited about setting the precedent that we're willing to grant an early start time, is, it's this project now, and then, and maybe Toll decides they want to start starting early, because they hear that's a thing that can happen if they ask, you know, I'm not excited about setting that precedent.
Laura?
Attached to the memo was the letter from Siemens, and it articulated both the basis for why they were making the requests, and then also ways that they would limit excessive noise when, in the prior to 7 a.m. start. And the reason why they wanted to have the extra hour on the day was to try to allow to complete the project before the start of the school year. So, it's not something like we're doing for a convenience for them to be able to do it quicker. I think it will be chaos if the school year starts and there, the trucks are rolling around there at 7 a.m. But the other thing is, it's quite a list of things that they say will be limited to post-7 a.m. Audible equipment, horns will, will only be used in emergency situations. I, I don't know if maybe they'll be doing some type of staging things that don't really require the, the heavy equipment. They even say that no excavation of new material will occur prior to 7 a.m., and only direct loading of stockpiled material, so I, you know, I don't know if that, that plays into it. It seems like they're trying to be, they're not just simply saying, "We'd like to start an hour earlier," because, you know, probably most construction companies would love to get their projects done earlier, but I think that they're trying to be conscientious about it.
Anybody else have any other comments? I mean, when you do the math, it is a full week less that they would work if they, for the next, you know, five weeks, if they say five hours.
Eight hours a day is eight hours a day, no matter if it's from 6 to 2:30 or 7 to 3:30.
Well, no, that's what we, that's what I asked, was would they be working longer days to finish sooner, and the answer was yes. So, if they're putting in more time every day to be able to finish a week sooner so that it doesn't run into the school year, that's a good thing, but-
That is a good thing.
Again, depending on the noise, we'll, I'm sure we'll hear if it's noisy.
I know that, you know, they have-
And they'll get calls.
They have audible alarms for a reason, okay, and a few dismantle an audible alarm, I mean, they have it for OSHA, so if we approve something like this with that in something, I don't know if, if we're- I don't know if, if we're susceptible or.
No, I think they're saying they just wouldn't back up the vehicles, is what they're, they're saying. They would just only go forward if they were going to do that during that hour.
Doing a lot of circles.
Until, until after 7:00.
Until 7:00. Once the 7:00 comes, then they would be having a backup.
There's no backing up between 6:00 and 7:00.
Correct.
I'm not opposed to it.
You know, it could be something as simple as, we've got a job in Lake Forest right now, not to tell a story, but Lake Forest is very, very strict, as you can maybe imagine, and the job has been stopped twice now, and fines have gone out by the city a couple of times, and now they're gonna get distributed yet to be determined, but if a tradesman gets out of their vehicle before 7:00 in the morning, the phone is ringing, and that's when the city comes over to the job site and has a little talk with everybody. So, there's a lot of things that tradesmen can be doing in preparation of their day before they actually start making noise. Get out, set up their instruments, do whatever they do, get their tape measure out, start making plans, have their safety toolbox talks, 'cause everybody has to have those, that takes 15 minutes a day. And so there's a lot of things people can do that are a course of the daily eight hours a day that can take place without making noise. So, I say, because of that experience, I'd be willing to give it a shot, but if they start with the backup alarms and the banging of the buckets, just shut them down.
Should we, as, as a compromise, say that they can do this only during the week and not during the weekends?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Definitely, the weekends should be off limits.
Right.
People going to work every day, most people are 6:00 a.m.
You're probably up by then, right.
So, weekends, people sleep in.
Right.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, on my projects, 7:00 a.m. start, that's it. I fight with 100 guys on site, they all want to start at 6:00, 7:00 a.m., so there's no conflicts. But this here, I'm not opposed to it, and Dave is right, there's a lot of things to be done, but if they start making noise and they're encroaching upon people's sensitivities, you know, we pull the plug immediately.
Sure.
So, to summarize, Scott, we'll take a vote on this, we would recommend to you that they can start construction earlier than 7:00 a.m., only Monday through Friday, not on Saturday or Sunday. Those would have to stay at our regular ordinance, which is 7:00 on Saturday and 8:00 on Sunday. That we understand that they're doing this to try to avoid conflicts with the daycare center as well as school starting, and that we will agree to this as long as they agree to their excessive noise restrictions that they have placed upon themselves, and that we can shut this down, you can, as our liaison with staff between us and city council, based on resident complaints. So, I don't think we need to make a motion, this is just a recommendation to staff. Should we vote on it, or does it matter? Does anybody, does everybody agree?
What do you think, Ellen? Lot of that, or what?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that the delegation to staff probably should be approved in a council meeting.
Okay, okay, so, um, I recommend to staff that we approve this based on the conditions as stated. Make a second, or?
Second.
Okay, motion by Stark, second by Salvati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that was two?
Two no's.
It was three.
Three no's.
Three no's.
Oh, sorry. Okay, three no's.
Why don't we do a roll call so we get it right?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So they're gonna work until September 30th?
They're saying that they would only need the early hours until September 30th, at the, at the latest, so they may, they may be still working.
That's to stay out of the school?
Well, no, they, they will probably still be doing work on-site with grading and, and putting topsoil on and so, and seeding and that, so there's still gonna be work going on it. They said the whole project will probably be about 90 days plus an additional time for the parking lot removal and restoration also.
And they can't do another access from McKee Street? It has to be from Wilson?
They could, but we, when we did the demolition, that was the construction route that we approved for that, at that time, was, was just the Wilson Street route.
Okay.
I just received a note from an alderman who's watching, who said, "We set precedent on hours outside of normal on his very first sworn vote for Wilson Street work."
I'm sorry, say that again?
Alderman Callahan, who's watching from Florida, said that we set precedent on outside, hours outside of normal on his very first vote sworn in, that he was, after he was sworn in on Wilson Street. So, but he doesn't say which way we went on it, he just tells me that we have.
That was a city job, I think that was a city job, I believe.
Yeah, we were working around the clock on that.
Right.
Right, right.
So, okay, roll call. Jay, we're onto the roll call part of this.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan absent, Meitzler absent, Euler?
Aye.
Euer?
Nay.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
And Attack?
Nay.
Motion carried.
What was it, what was the tally?
Nine to three.
Nine to three, okay. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
And we'll put this on the agenda for city council, and then you can give them official yes or, or no.
Okay, item 18, project status. Laura?
Uh, yes, I am passing around right now a mock-up for a sign that we would like to post on the former Larson Becker properties. While it's extremely successful right now as a temporary parking lot, of course, it is our hope that in the not-so-distant future, that that will be the site of more redevelopment to complement both what has been going on on the Wood Earth section of North River Street, but also the One Washington Place project as well. And so, Chris Cudworth, working with Chris Easton, have developed this sign, and we expect to post that on both the east and the west side of the street so that as people visit, they know that this is gonna be a site of redevelopment opportunities and who they might contact at the city if they would like to bring those redevelopment ideas to our attention. And so I just wanted to show that to you and see if you had any feedback about it or if you thought that that was a good thing. Lucy?
I have one question. It says includes opportunity for residential and hospitality enterprises. I think it should list all the options, because I know it says includes, which means there are other options, right?
That's correct.
But I think it could be, people might have just residential and hospitality stuck in their mind.
Okay.
And maybe that's what, that's just my opinion.
But this is what the sign would have said, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't think you wanna, like, stick 20 more options in there, that's.
Well, I, I, are there 20 more options?
I don't think the sign should say what the options are, I say, it should just say redevelopment opportunities.
Redevelopment, just then.
Why limit it, you know, why, why put ourselves in a box with that, or somebody say, well, this is all you said could be there?
I think the reasoning was that they didn't want them to think that it was merely commercial, for instance, as opposed to allowing residential in that area. Maybe if it said something like mixed use, as opposed to residential and hospitality enterprises.
Hospitality is nice, though, because that kinda sticks with you.
It is.
I mean, I like that word.
But it doesn't say.
Hotels may apply.
So you have to, I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah, so maybe it's better not to mention any of it and just let all redevelopment opportunities come our way.
Yeah, exactly.
It, it appears to me that we've got this map colored wrong, from the perspective that on the east side of River Street, we got the lot right on the corner, which is directly to the west of Alderman Stark's house, as property that is not available for development, and then we got the lot next door, which is an occupied own that we don't own, shown as a redevelopment piece.
I see that, it doesn't come down to the street.
That was gonna be my question, why didn't it go all the way to, all the way to Spring Street? 'Cause I thought we owned from the corner.
No, we don't.
We only own the, we only own the corner lot.
That's the Weaver Partners property.
No, 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 Laura, if you look at the, at the picture, the pink doesn't come down to Spring Street.
That's what I'm saying, the pink does not come down to Spring.
The pink should come all the way to Spring Street.
Yes.
Because the city owns that integral lot.
Just the first lot.
It could be the, he's been with the.
But it almost looks like we're talking about the house north of the lot, and we don't own that house.
Although you can see my house and my garage, and it does line up with the back of it in the saddle, so.
It's just the pink area is not large enough.
Yeah, okay, well, all right.
If you continued it all the way over to Washington, then I might get nervous, but.
And it would be up to a developer if they want to make offers on contiguous properties.
There you go.
This makes it obvious.
Exactly, exactly.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to see it say available bigger, like, available for redevelopment rather than, this looks a little more informational, like, hey, citizens, there's some redevelopment going on, as opposed to, hey, potential developer, this stuff is available.
And Mayor Shoki mentioned color. I think that the redevelopment opportunity should be green instead of red.
Do you have a, do you have a color that you would like one Washington?
I would defer to Alderman Salvati on color selection.
I like orange, personally.
Wait, I think that somewhere around here, we have that palette with 1,000 colors on it? We could pick a few chips out.
Redevelopment opportunity to say for sale, and current the letters nice and tight.
Yeah, exactly. Hovatica?
Um, no, that is community development general number, so that they can get it to whomever would be the appropriate.
No, I just think it should be green.
Green?
Green would be the better one, saying, hey, citizens.
You wanna specify a PMS code for that, or?
We going to?
Is the green, okay.
We gotta put this in any?
Yeah, that can't be green.
I'm sure that we will, I'm sure that we will, yes.
Okay, is that it, Laura?
Um, for that, yes. I also wanted to let you know that this morning, we had a meeting with Civil Tech, who is the engineering firm working on the phase two part of the Main Street redevelopment, and we talked about the timeline for the project because I know that city council wanted to look at like a 75% completed phase of that project so that when it came up as to how the property driveways would be for 7:11 through 7:15, that we'd have an opportunity to take a look at that before the plans were completed, and that looks to be probably like Gary confirmed for me, October, November timeframe of this year is about when you would expect.
Yeah, late, late 17, early 18, it might be, before we come back to council with that.
Right. Also, I wanted to note that we have very light agendas for June 20th and June 27th. Do you want to hold both of those meetings and take a look at some of those items that we wanted to have deeper discussions on, or do you want to consider canceling one of those two meetings?
What do we have on the agendas at this point?
I, uh.
Community Development was gonna have a couple of items from the plan commission on the 27th.
On the 27th?
Yeah.
And there are no items currently on the June 20th.
The window project will be coming forward to council.
When do you think that'll be?
The window, the date, the date is, that's, that's, it's no sooner than the 27th.
Yeah.
27th?
We could take care of it all on the 27th.
Jeff, what about the one item that got taken off tonight that's going to historic preservation?
Uh, that'll go on the 26th or 27th.
27th? Mayor, do you have anything that you wanna try to do on the next council meeting? Could we?
Nothing is begging at me. Laura and I talked about it today, about, you know, a route for the next walk, but I, other than taking a tour down at River Rain, I probably could do that in companion with something else, so.
Well, I guess if we don't have anything that we need to meet for, there's no need to meet.
Okay. Also, staff is going to be updating the presentations about the last time that we were talking about those crossings on Route 31 in light of the incident that happened here a couple of weeks ago, and then also, Gary, did you wanna talk about the, the new aspect of that?
Sure, I can talk about that, and then I wanna drop back to Main Street too before we end with projects. I think I said a couple of weeks ago that the, the options that are available to us were amber flashing and advanced warning signs and over the, over the road mast arms, those are acceptable to the feds, but has, have not yet been adopted by IDOT. So IDOT would need to officially adopt those. So we will probably become, we're gonna get cost estimates so that you know what you're, what you're kind of, you know, in the ballpark of what it's going to cost, and we're gonna come back to city council, probably with the recommendation that council would authorize the mayor to send a letter to IDOT formally requesting essentially the concept, approval of that concept, before we were to retain any engineers to, to go through the design stage. There's no sense in doing any design work until IDOT has kinda signed off on the, on the concept, so. We have tried numerous phone calls, we've had meetings with them, we don't seem to be getting formal approval, so I think it's time to put things in writing and kinda force the issue and see if IDOT is willing to accept or not accept. So that'll come to you in the next couple of weeks.
Can you consult with the bike commission about this and get their input, since this is like the bike route we moved from Houston Street to McKee Street?
I'm not sure what input they can provide.
Well, I think, I don't know, I mean, there has been, I did receive one email, and I know that Marty brought it up, that maybe we just get rid of it.
Yeah, that is, that's option number two.
So that would be input that they could provide.
Yeah.
And how they feel about it.
We'll collaborate with them prior to the meeting to let them know what information will be presented, and then invite them to be a party to that conversation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just throw something in? I had the opportunity last Wednesday, I guess it was, I was in a CMAP and with the state transportation secretary, it was like the day after our, two days, I guess it was, after our accident, so I shared with him that we had had a mishap, and he kinda rolled his eyebrows, and he says, he says, you know, I know where you're at, and he said, I know what we're trying to do here, he says, whatever we do in Batavia, and he says, it's a statewide impact, 'cause then everybody else in the state's gonna want the same thing. And he says, the big problem we got going here is the, the going to red, and he says, if you, if you turn that, any traffic signal automatically to red instantly, you got some issues out there that we haven't got ourselves through. All of a sudden, you're driving down the street and, you know, when you see the traffic signal start to change, we go from red, yellow to green, or vice versa. So he says, we're probably gonna have to have some type of a, of a warning that you probably have to keep your flash in yellow, and that'll be the signal that we're gonna be turning it to red. But he says, then, one of the issues they found in other places that they've been watching this is, is that if you were to have a red and you had some kids in the neighborhood that wanted to play jokes or be teasing, they'd be out there every two or three minutes hitting this thing trying to stop traffic. And so he says, there's probably gonna have to be some type of an override system on these where you're only gonna be able to allow this thing to go red maybe once every 15 minutes or something. In other words, if you get any place that you're gonna have to do it, because to just give the public the right to stop red traffic at any point in time and then you get some kid involved in the, in this thing, you're gonna have some problems with that. And he says, the bigger thing that, biggest thing that the IDOT engineers are worried about is that if you go instantly to red, you're gonna have a whole bunch of rearenders of rearenders, because people are going to be slamming on their brakes, and people are going to be hitting the backs of somebody else because they aren't going to see it." And he says, "The other thing that you're going to have to do is," he says, "We're going to have to probably change Illinois' thinking about the pedestrian always has the right of way." And we want to keep that, he said, "We want to keep that concept in place, but the pedestrian has to learn that he don't, he or she doesn't step into that crosswalk till that traffic is stopped." In other words, you know, you're going to get some people that are going to think, "Well, I just hit the button, so here I go," and they're going to get themselves clipped out there. So he says, "We're having a real thought process down in Springfield as to how we're going to bring all these factors under control and put them into some type of working order." He says, "The bottom line to it is," and Gary, I think, just alluded to it a little bit, this, anybody wants to put one of these babies in, it's probably going to cost you more money than you think it's going to cost. Because there's going to have to be several different phases and factors to this thing as to how you're going to allow these streets to automatically take on this red to allow for pedestrians. But he said, "The one that kind of is, they don't have an answer for it is, is how you control the kid in the neighborhood that wants to go out there and just start stopping traffic." That, you know, that's problematic.
I also wanted to mention that Chris Cudworth is going to be working with members of the Batavia Police Department, as well as BATV. Tomorrow, he has a meeting to begin filming PSAs about the different types of crosswalks that we have in our community, and how to utilize those safely, both from a pedestrian, and from a motorist, and from a bicycle standpoint. Gary, did you have another comment about the Main Street reconstruction?
Just wanted to run a concept by City Council to see what your thoughts were on it. As Laura said, we met with Civil Tech this morning. It's a federal process, so they have very specific guidelines with regards to land acquisition. At this point in time, we're not anticipating any permanent land acquisition for that project. The only acquisition that we would need would be for temporary easements. I'll give you one example. In some of the historic parts of that stretch, there's actually some public sidewalk today that sets a foot back on private property. So we would want to remove that sidewalk, move it into the right of way, reconstruct it, and then it would come off the private property. But you can't just go onto someone's private property to do that. You need a temporary construction easement in order to go onto their property. So that, there's 20-some-odd properties where we're going to need construction easements. So these would be easements that the homeowners, the property owners, would need to grant to allow construction activities to occur, and then landscape restoration would occur after that, and there would be no permanent ownership of the property. Okay, so right now, the engineer's conceptual cost estimate for all these construction easements is about $70,000. The federal process to go through the appraisals, and then the negotiation adds about another $140,000. So you're basically tripling the cost of the easements in order to go through the federal process. One option that we have, because these are temporary easements, and we're really not asking anyone to give up their permanent property rights, one option we have is for the city to approach these property owners outside of the federal process, and basically say to the property owners, "We're going to be improving your street. Would you consider granting the easement to the city?" And, you know, basically just kind of working with them as neighbor to neighbor to grant the construction easement. And really, if they all work together to do that, they could save $210,000, $250,000. And we had the brainstorm idea, if we were able to secure property for another parking lot, you know, in the West Town area, we could use that money to fund the parking lot. It's money we're going to have to spend if we go through the federal process. But there's a way to go around that, but it may take some staff effort, and that's why we wanted to bring it to you before we expended any effort on that. I think that's a great idea. If we could divert money over and to come up with a parking lot out there, I think would be a great idea. It would have to come out of different font altogether. Right, I understand that. But, you know, rather than have to spend the money out there, and if we can put together the easements, because they're temporary, and then everybody that agrees to that would end up with a new sidewalk down their property, not on their property. There will still be some costs, because there'll still be some need for documentation. Right. And so those costs will still be there. But like, the acquisition costs and some of the other appraisal costs won't have to be there. I'd like to see us try to do that option.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Where do we think we would put this parking lot?
I'm not saying, the only thing I'm in support of right now is not spending money foolishly. Let the city work on getting the easements. As far as any savings of any money being spent anyplace else, I say, "Let's just save the money." I don't know anything about no parking lot.
There you go.
Lastly, I just wanted to let you know that I have a draft for the RFP, for the strategic planning, and I'll circulate that to everybody if you've got any comments that you'd like to make. But I would like to get that out either by the end of this week or by Monday of next week. You need some more time with it. And that's all that I have, unless you have questions about projects?
How are we doing on storage?
That gentleman is returning. I have to get in touch with him. He was out of town for a vacation, so I'll have an update on that by our next meeting.
Which will be the 27th?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Do.
Susan?
I was recently, you know, we've been talking about the structure of our advisory boards. And as I was going through the advisory committees, something that came to my attention was that when it comes to the Bicycle Commission, we don't have any members of staff on the Bicycle Commission. We do.
We do. Randy Dikey?
He's not listed as a member of the Bike Commission. And so that's why I wanted to make sure that we had staff representation, because when the Bicycle Commission things come to us, I've never been fully aware if it's been vetted first through staff, and then comes to us, or if it's just coming to us through the Bike Commission. So I just, it might, you might want to make sure it's listed.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, what's this status on the Marathon property? We approved demo a long time ago. Wasn't sure where we were at.
Reconstruction meeting is Friday this week. Something the owner was out of town for a couple of weeks. Should be moving forward soon.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I do.
Peggy?
I just wanted to let you know that the monthly financial reports are on the website now, under the Transparency section.
Oh, okay, good.
Back to 2015.
That's quick.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of purchase and sale of electricity. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by Uer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hold. There will not be any actions coming out of this.